Okay, ready? And welcome everybody, July 1st, 2025. Meeting is at 6:00. We got a good crowd tonight. I'd like to call this meeting no order. If I could get approval of agenda, please.
Second.
Second, all in favor of I? It's our pleasure. Ms. King, I was gonna open us up with all your company, with all your enthusiasm. I see you're on the agenda, so we'll wait to let you.
I am.
Show your enthusiasm on the new business. How's that?
Let us pray. Father, we just come to you in the mighty name of Jesus, and we thank you so much for this county. We thank you so much for our state, for these citizens, for our commissioners. We thank you for wise counsel that you're giving them to make the right decisions and the godly decisions. We thank you for citizens that love you, that love this country, and that you are restoring all things. And we just thank you for this night. We thank you for everything that's coming up tonight, that you will bring favor where favor is due, and that you'll give them, again, wisdom for all the decisions they need to make. And we honor you above all things, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Before we get started on our planning zone tonight, if anybody's here tonight in opposition of any of these requests, you will get an opportunity to speak. Ms. Petrowski, you wanna start us off?
Chairman, our first item is a request by Gray Community Church. It's a conditional use to allow a church to be established in an existing building. The property is located at 215 Old Highway 18 and is zoned RR. Planning Commission has recommended approval of this request.
I understand we've got, on Zoom, gonna speak to us tonight? Can you hear us?
Yeah.
Yep, the floor is yours. Can you turn it up?
Okay.
Okay, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, good deal. My name's Josh Echols, live at 174 Sandra Drive here in Gray. Grew up in Jones County, been here my whole life, moved back recently to plant a church called Gray Community Church. We currently rent from the county in the non-solitorium, and we run about 280, 300 people on Sundays morning. And I think our reputation precedes us. Our desire here is to know God and make God known, to see our community thrive, and to see our community made whole and made better. And we wanna do everything we can to serve our neighbors and serve this community. Our last Sunday was our Serve Sunday, where we actually took the entire Sunday, our entire church left the building, and we went and served our community. So that's our desire, that's a little bit about who we are, and I think our reputation precedes us. But we're here to stay, we're here to make a difference. We're here until all of Jones County knows Jesus. And that's a tall task, but it's the vision God's given us. And we request and wanna be able to purchase the property from TJ Heath, where the old Clinton Opry is, to use that for our church facility. We've been working with Landmark and getting some designs and plans put forward and fixing to start the process as soon as we get through here with permits and things like that and all that good stuff. But we just wanna request for this zoning to be changed to allow us to do so up on top of the hill, right there overlooking most of Jones County, especially right as you come in to Gray. I think it's gonna be a great place for our church to be, a city on a hill, to be alive for people to come and to help continue to make Jones County a great place to live.
Any questions from the board? Anyone here tonight in opposition of this request? No one?
Motion to approve request for church, old Clinton Opry location.
All right, second. Any discussion? I think it's a great opportunity. All in favor of I? Ayes have it. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
For allowing me to attend online, so I didn't have to leave this beautiful beach.
Oh, my bad. You can come down here and visit us sometime if you wanna open us up at the meeting, anytime you want to.
I'll do, but anytime you need.
Yeah, I know your wife sings real well, too, so she wants to... I love to hear her sing. Like I said, she got a beautiful voice.
She does. I've been working with her really hard.
She got it all from you, eh? All right, well, great. Thank you.
All right, thank y'all.
Thank you. Chairman, our next item is request by Barbara Baker to rezone property located at 605 Green Settlement Road from Ag. 1 to RR. This is to allow the property to be subdivided. If I could provide just a little bit of background, they've got an existing 2.91-acre lot with two homes presently located on it. They wanna subdivide the property to be able to transfer ownership of one of those parcels to somebody else.
Okay. Is Ms. Baker here tonight? You wanna just come forward? Both of you come forward?
I might say she is, so yes, help me out.
You're fine. Yes, did, like I said, you'll do fine, just a little bit what you want to know. We've already heard it, but if anything you wanna add to it?
No, I just needed to divide the property up, because I haven't got enough acreage for the two houses to be on. So I need to have it surveyed, and I wondered how I need to do that.
Any questions for Ms. Baker? Anyone here tonight in opposition to this request? Anyone? This is San Francisco.
Yep, yep, we've read the history on it, Chairman. I make much to approve.
Second. You got a second? Any more discussion? None? All in favor of I? Ayes have it. You got it? Thank you.
And I gotta have it surveyed now until I get equal.
You get one. Just come to him, he'll walk you through it.
Chairman, our next item is request by Gerald Lee Ricks. It's a conditional use to allow an accessory dwelling unit. Property is located at 142 Fire Tower Road, consists of 25.55 acres on Ag. 1. The Planning Commission has recommended approval of this request.
Mr. Ricks here tonight?
Chairman and members of the board, I'm Gerald Lee Ricks. My address is 582 English Oak Lane, Prince Frederick, Maryland. I'm here with my mother-in-law tonight, who owns the property out on Fire Tower Road, and my wife, Dr. Crystal Ricks, and I are looking to transition down to help care for her. She does have some medical conditions that we explained to the planning zoning board, that we want to make sure that she's in good company while residing in building a new home here.
Any questions for Mr. Ricks? Anyone here tonight in opposition to this request? Anyone? This is...
Motion to approve, Chairman.
Second.
Second.
Thank you all.
All in favor of I? Ayes have it. All right.
Chairman, our final zoning item is a request by Sherri Daniel, is to allow an additional lot on an existing private road. Property is located at 186 Woodward Road and is zoned RR. Because this is a variance, there is not a recommendation from the Planning Commission.
Ms. Daniels over.
Hey.
How you doing?
How you doing? We're planning to just put another place to live for my mom. I'm gonna move into the home and help maintain it, and she wanted to downsize. Instead of selling the home, we're gonna put something out there for her, is our plan.
Sure. Any questions? Anyone tonight in opposition to this request? Anyone?
I make a motion to approve.
Second. Second. Any more discussion? None? All in favor of I? Ayes have it. Was that easy enough?
That's easy enough.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we move forward to consent agenda, approval of minutes. We had the third Tuesday, June 17th, along with executive session. Y'all have opportunity to review the minutes. I have to motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Wish if I got it all done with all the second tomorrow. Any more discussion? Excuse me, all in favor of I? Ayes have it. This is what I'm looking forward to. Ms. King, you wanna bring your excitement up here and tell us what's going on at the library?
Thank y'all so much for allowing me to speak and to say thank you. Because of you, we're able to do everything that we do at the library and your support. We are in the middle of summer reading, and we are packed out. In June, we had 4,272 people coming to the door at the library. That's around 215 a day. One day, we had over 400. So we are excited. We, of course, are in cooperation with the Board of Education, so their summer reading has been combined with our summer reading. So everything the kids do with us, they, you know, they get the credit at the school for that. So that's super exciting that we were able to do that. We did that last year and now this year also. We have had a total of 1,112 people sign up for summer reading so far, and that is phenomenal. Out of the 17 libraries, the same as last year, out of 17 libraries in our region, we have a third of the numbers of the entire 17 libraries. So just tell us, Jones County is exploding. And that is because it's, as we've said before, it's more of a community center, which is phenomenal, and just the support of the community. I have so many community partners that help out. Some of those are Family Connection, Board of Education, Head Start, Kiwanis Club, Tri-County EMC, Friends of the Library, Jones County Special Olympics, the City of Gray, Exchange Bank, Robins Federal, Gray Memorial Chapel, Ace of Gray. I mean, just the community has just rallied around the library, and they're always giving us support financially, and also, like Ace of Gray gave us all our flowers for our butterfly garden, which we've just put in this spring, and so we're still working on that. But that's super exciting and for the kids to be involved, and we had a big pollinator program already. So some of the things that we had, some of our programs, we had our theme is color our world, so everything's about art. And so the first thing we had was an outdoor art activity where we had, like, ice cubes that were colors that they painted with, and splatter paint, and painting rocks, and we had 350 people outside doing that. So that was crazy. That was our kickoff. Then our Gray Garden Club came, we did flower arranging and pollinator activities. The next week, we had the GCSU Star Lab came, and also Stephen Smith, who is Nassau educator, zoomed in, and we made space stations with the kids. The next week, last week, we had Jones County Children's Art there, so the whole Lion King cast came out, super exciting. And they had costumes, and they sang for the kids, and danced, and that was phenomenal. Because what we're trying to do is every week bring in some kind of art, like Jones County arts, you know, theater is art, music is art. Tomorrow, we have Pete the Cat and Curious George coming, and a big reading out. I don't even, I don't, if you wanna come see, come tomorrow, when we have Pete the Cat and Curious George. And we're gonna do reading and activities with the kids, steam kits, that's all tomorrow. Next week, we have a recycled fashion show, so we're having all the kids and adults make outfits out of recyclables for Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, and then we're having a fashion show, we're gonna have prizes. We've got some of our community leaders coming and being judges. We have Bramble Bottom's Farm coming, and GCSU Art Department coming, doing screen painting. So every week, we have a big activity, and then we have movie matinees, we have steam kits out, we have adult art classes, kid art classes, teen programs, stitching groups that come, they come twice a month. We had a Father's Day game day, so we are extremely busy, but it's so phenomenal to just see people pouring in. And I mean, people come in the morning, some of these families come, and they stay all day. I'm talking four hours, they'll stay all day. And so I'm thrilled that we have a place that people come and feel good about being there, you know, that we can promote literacy. And tomorrow is actually a Growing Greyhound event, that's something we do with the Board of Education, which is zero to four-year-olds. So we're promoting reading, we give them free books, and have all kind of activities and things we give to parents to help them learn how to read to their kids and help their kids promote reading and literacy. So that's tomorrow is with that Pete the Cat and Curious George coming. But it's, you know, it's just amazing that what we've been able to do with our library here in Jones County. And again, it's because of the community surrounding us like y'all have, and supporting us, and everybody just rallying. I mean, we, I can ask anyone in the community anytime, and they say yes. No one has ever said no to us for anything that we need. So because of that support, we're able to do what we do. And if you haven't come to the library, anybody listening to this, y'all are missing out, because it is really, we have the outdoor areas for picnicking, and then butterfly garden, and then inside, we've just got so much going on every day. It's amazing. And my staff, I just have to give them the huge credit, because they love everyone, everyone that walks in the door, they speak to them, they know their name, they're finding books for them. I mean, they are, we are just so blessed to have them. So, so, does anyone have any questions or anything that you want to know about the library that I haven't told you?
I know that day I was there, I don't know how many hundreds of kids were there, but I'm looking, and it was just like wall to wall, you couldn't stir them.
Yeah.
They were painting rocks, and, I mean, you name it, they were doing it.
Yeah, that was 315.
I mean, you could, I mean, it was just like, you had to watch where you walked.
Yeah, that's right.
I just found out that y'all have a whole section on the Healy family for River North, the history of River North.
Yeah, yeah, we have a lot of history, a lot of genealogy section back there, anybody that wants to come look, yeah. Some you can check out, and some you just have to stay and look at. But we've got all of the yearbooks for Jones County High School, all the way back, I think all of them. So if you need to look through the yearbook for somebody. But anyway...
Question.
Yes, sir.
So in 2018, we renovated. What's this total square footage, do you know?
The total what?
Square footage.
Oh, my gosh, you're gonna ask me that?
I know, I'm sorry.
They've outgrown it.
Yes, we have outgrown it.
All right, so, and that was my question. So in thinking about that, right, 10 years, 20 years down the road, if we already outgrown it, what do we need?
Yeah, I would love a big activity room, which I think we could actually do without even messing with the library, like, just off the back. We'd have to talk to maybe Mr. Newberry about getting a little... But we need a big area. We need, because we have meetings now. This morning, we have brunch buddies. We do historical talks, you know, we did one this morning, it was on Lizzie Borden, 40 Wax, and it was all about true crime, that was the one this morning. We had 35 adults in that back room. We packed in there, but it's brunch buddies, so they get brunch, we serve them brunch, and then they sit and they have a lecture. And that's been going on for almost three years now. That's a huge adult program, and none of, I'm not downing any library, but most people don't have this kind of adult program like we do. It's just, so, I can't get anymore back there. So I would love to have just a big room off the back, that we could have children's activities in there, we could have something like that, brunch buddy, I could have 50 instead of just 35. So that, to me, that's one thing I would love to see, it's just a big, and again, it wouldn't probably have to even touch, mess with the building that's there, just, you know. Down the road, I mean, you know, a few years from now, but we're definitely overrun. I mean, we're, we're out of room.
So just as a heads up, you know, we're getting ready to apply for SWASH, put it on the ballot. Dream big.
Yeah, dream big. Wow, okay, I can do it. We just need more room. We really, like I said, the meeting room is packed out for every meeting, and we have a lot of community meetings come in there. You know, Family Connections come in, and we're packed. You know, all of the, any, any of the, we have volunteer training for Board of Education there, and it's packed. So again, I, I don't wanna touch the bill, I don't wanna mess with what's there, because it's amazing. I would love to have a bigger children's area, but I think if we had that big activity room, then we could add that, you know, we could have the children's stuff in there, we could have meetings in there, it would just be an area to pour into when we're just out of room. But last year, we had the Museum of Arts and Sciences come in, I didn't even ask them this year, because we were, they would have, I don't wanna say, the fire marshal would have shut us down, but it was over 400, 400, 500 people in the building, which is just there, we couldn't. So I thought, I can't do that this year, because I can't.
You couldn't even stir them.
I can't. Sorry, but it's over, that was last year. I'm not doing it this year. So, but I have to think every, like, this year, everything I did, I had to think, it's gotta be outside. Or, like, tomorrow with the Pete the Cat, it is inside, and it's gonna be, it's gonna be. So, you know, we're just, we're just packed. And I mean, it's a community center, if we had a community center in Gray, maybe that would take some of us off. I don't know. But I love it, I love it, I don't wanna stop what we're doing. But if you...
Your excitement is just, I mean, you bring so much energy every time you come in.
Well, I appreciate that. But if you want me to dream big, boy, I can, I can start looking and dream big. And of course, we need an architect to figure that out. But there is land, again, around, you know, we might could do some expansion, but, but we are, we, every year, and I even thought with this year, I was like, oh, my gosh, you know, every year, it's growing, and I'm thinking, next year, phew, you know, just how much, yeah. But y'all given me two positions to, you know, extra part-time positions, and we could not do this without them. I mean, I probably need about four more, but right now, and Shannon's always like, if you need help, you know, y'all have been wonderful to let me have the extra help, because we, there's no way, there's four of us, you know. But, but it's exciting, it's, it's super exciting, it's just trying to manage that. How are we gonna get it all done? So, thank you for that question, I'll start thinking some more about that, so.
Very good.
It's awesome, awesome.
Thank you.
Thank y'all very much for letting me speak.
All right, public defender's office, FY 23, 26 budget. Ms. Waller?
Hello.
How you doing?
I am well, I'm here. I'm currently responsible for four of our counties that we serve in the circuit, so I'm in court every day and in jails every night. It's a good time, but that's okay. I love that you started with prayer, and I love that you said the Fledge of Allegiance. So I was called to the practice of law by Isaiah 1:17, "Learn to do good, seek justice, reprove the ruthless, defend the orphan, and plead for the widow." And that's exactly why I went to school. I've served in various roles in the public sector, I've been a prosecutor, it didn't suit my spirit. I bring to public defense the idea of trying to aid everyone that we touch in learning to make better decisions and thinking through what led them to be where they are. I think that makes safer communities and can help to bring people into a healthy member of the community. So tonight, we present to you our fiscal year 26 budget. It is very similar, it is expanded so that you can see each of the lines. Mr. Stroberg did leave our office. He has become the juvenile public, or the juvenile prosecutor in the judicial circuit. So he is still serving the judicial circuit and, and working with the district attorney's office. So we have multiple attorney vacancies, as you can see. I'm working to put systems in, I've made friends with a third-year student at Mercer University. He had interned with a colleague of mine from Walton County that I worked with in, in private practice before returning to state service, and have worked with each of the law schools in the state to try to encourage people to consider coming out to the rural areas. And we have to incentivize that. A lot of the young people who are graduating from law school aren't considering public service and aren't necessarily considering living in the rural areas. So if any of you know anyone local, or know anyone who wants to come back home and close down their business and have, you know, stable salary and good benefits, because the state does, does have good health benefits and vacation, and a set schedule, not have to run their business anymore, I'd love for you to send them my way, suggest them to me. But it's been a wild eight weeks. So I grew up in Indiana, came down here, fell in love with a boy from extra South Georgia, he's actually from Pierce County. He's here tonight.
Extra South Georgia.
Extra South Georgia, yeah. And he's actually the dean for career planning at UGA Law. So both of us are very service-minded in our careers. I am called to serve prisoners and indigent people, and to help them to engage and make their lives better and more safe and stable for themselves and future generations. The friend that I sat next to has informed me that I'll be getting, or our office will be getting a new customer, a new client, probably in the morning, before coming here. And so I look forward to getting to know all of you and to getting to know each of the communities. And do any of you have any questions about me or my budget?
I was born in Evansville, Indiana, so...
You are not.
Yep.
I graduated from North High School.
Okay.
So I was born in Jasper, raised in Tell City, and went to high school in Evansville. I tell my husband, I don't know, I can't tell north, south, east, and west, because I grew up in Indiana, and Kentucky was due west, and it's supposed to be south. So you have to tell me landmarks for me to find my way. And if you all need a house plan, my parents built an apartment on my house, on our five acres, so we've got a really great one-bedroom apartment plan.
Any questions? No, we appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Send lawyers my way.
Jim, yeah, if y'all could just do a motion to approve the...
I make a motion to approve the budget for the public defender.
Second.
Second.
Just a question, Chairman. Jason, do we know, I think the latter said there was some differences in our leftovers from last year, is there anything big we need to know about?
No, nothing. That's, that's kind of been the norm from year to year, and so, yeah, a little bit of a roll over there.
Any more discussion? None, all in favor of I? Ayes have it. Thank you. Mr. Kitchens, we got a doctor of vice, Jake Woods, timeline.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, we had talked about it before, and based on our grant from the Georgia Outdoor Stewardship Program, I was gonna ask Jason if we had an update on that.
And so I've got it coming around, the, the front page there is the, the timeline that we had established in December last year. The backside of the page is the, the proposed revised timeline that we've put together for you. Talked with Tim Ingram about this, and we both feel like it's reasonable. No change, no change in the, the closeout date, so the, the project end date stays the same, there are just some changes in terms of the, the bidding and, and construction timeframe. So the construction timeframe is, is pushed back to October to December of 2025, but we still feel like we'll be able to get the project finished by the end of this calendar.
I got, I got a flat of it, that I, I walked out, I went out there today and checked all the new survey and all, and it's very clear that they've got everything marked well. I will say that we've got about 50 tires gotta be moved out of there, and a lot of, a lot of trash has been accumulated in there, but...
New trash or old trash?
A little bit of everything. You know, we already had a deal where somebody was cited and went to court on it, and it's back again.
Cameras?
Same, same area. Same works, when you go around the back, when, when you know where the property line is now, we've got a, we've got a landfill behind it.
Cameras?
Yes, so, but it's well marked, I mean, we could...
Still don't think you heard.
I'm sorry?
He asked about cameras.
Oh, cameras.
Yeah.
No, I'm sorry.
Talk a little loud for us.
I didn't have marinades, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
I didn't wanna hear myself cough.
All right.
But, no, it's not in a position for cameras right now, but we can go ahead and...
Show cameras.
We could, we, even then, you're not gonna, because it needs to be cleared, it really does. We can, we can go ahead and clear, we got one huge dead pine in the middle, it's gonna have to be taken down. But once the area is cleared, I think there's enough overburden on the side that we won't have to haul anything in there. I think we can actually utilize the basin where they were doing the excavation at. But by the time we clean everything up and brought it to Gray, we've probably got enough material on site to bring the parking lot up to Gray, at least get that much done, so that we can have a, if they keep it off the top of that hill.
Yeah, so, Chairman, we've talked about it being, you know, behind schedule, and I think we all are, you know, want more than anything for this thing to move forward, but I was gonna ask Jason, do we have a, I mean, something that, that it looks like the biggest timeline delay is between last year, between the permitting and the bidding, so, and I know in that time is when we, we found the illegal dumpings out there, and we're doing We're doing the survey, and then we're doing all that kind of stuff. What, is that the basin the biggest holdup, you think?
It was. And so, now that we've got the surveying complete, I think we're ready to roll. So, yeah, we, the pace should pick up considerably now.
Yeah, because the timeline looks the same. We just moved it back the six, seven months between then and the bidding. So, it's good to know that. And I thought we were having some issues with the survey and also.
Option the board wants to consider to go ahead and get the area cleared so we can kind of monitor it.
Yes.
I mean, it's ready. It's well-marked. And I actually took flag and tape. And there's some actual outcrops of some of his, I guess it's the pieces that were left over when he was making the stone. That would be, they need to remain there because you can, I mean, you can see where he actually sliced them. But it's just like the sliver areas. And so, there's several piles of those that need to be preserved and utilized in some capacity while they're there.
So, to our county attorney, does that take a motion or is it just a directive to the?
We need a motion or a directive to go ahead and do the clearing.
Directive.
Either way.
Directive.
Chair, you can make a directive to our county administrator, go ahead and move forward with that clearing.
I guess you heard that, didn't you?
There's your directive.
Thank you.
Get the bulldozers out there.
Yeah, yeah, will do.
And if I need, I walk out there with them and show them. There's one tree that really need to, it's a wood maker that I need to watch. Anything else? We're going right direction. All right. Old business, Mr. Isner, Transit.
So, you'll recall a month or so ago, we talked about Transit, bringing that operation in-house because our third-party operator wasn't going to provide that service anymore. So, today was day one for us, operating Transit. And we've taken the positions, put them through our process with salary-study consultant, and come back with the grades and just need the board to formally approve those grades. So, dispatcher would be 105, driver would be 104, and then special projects manager that'll oversee the entire program and operational, go from 112 to 114. I just need the board to approve those grades.
Were those salaries compatible to what they're at right now?
Yes, yes.
With a little more?
I've got to check the exact numbers, but we're not going to decrease that pay.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion. We have a second. Any more discussion?
Question. Who's managing it?
Mostly in my office is going to oversee the operation of the program.
Should that be a permanent thing or do we need to figure out where that should go?
I think it'll be fine as a permanent thing, but don't hold me to that. I mean, it may come back in six months or a year, and it may be a giant nightmare.
Weird program.
It is.
I don't know that it is permanent there.
I know the lady that has been running it, she's been there for years. Ms. Carol? Has been there for years running the program.
And she agreed to stay on with us. She's retired one time.
Yes.
But we're hopeful that she'll stay with us. And she's got one of the drivers that she's training on some aspects of what she does. And so, hopefully, there'll be a succession plan there when she does finally decide to completely retire. Yeah, we're still kind of peeling back layers of the onion and finding all sorts of new things that we have to do related to it.
Any more discussion? All in favor I? Wendy, you had somebody you wanted to introduce tonight?
Yes, I actually have two guests here tonight. I'll go with the quick and easy one. I've got Ken Barnes and Jimmy Chuck. I forgot your name, and I don't have my phone yet. Okay. So, these guys are with the amateur remote.
We was like here, yeah, 18 years ago, believe it or not. Since we took over that spot and y'all allowed us to do what we did, we drew a bunch of people. You know, we've been through COVID, and we've been through times. So, things have kind of, we're trying to get that same going again, but our runway and field is sinking.
Yeah, the landfill, just the nature of the landfill, it settles. And so, the runway is settled.
So, it's going from, when you land from here to there. So, what's, it's really done, it's allowed, you can still operate certain airplanes there, but the guys with the five and on up, they don't want to fly there because tearing the gear out from under are real expensive airplanes. So, as Ken and I are here to see if there's anything we can do or can the county help to get some leveling done there to straighten some of that out. And we understand, we know the EPD's there and where the cap is and all that. And we've done all that we were supposed to do and maintained that. But just a natural part of it, it's sinking.
Yeah, there's, I mean, we could do something, but just by the fact that it's a landfill, we don't, we're not going to touch anything unless everybody tells us.
As I asked Tiffany a question.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think the first thing, because we're in our last year of maintenance on that thing, so.
So, after this year, will it be?
We need to see if it's December 25 or December 26 that the monitor, the 30-year monitoring starts.
Then loosen up what you can do there a lot.
26.
December 26, so we got a year and six months.
Well, what we're wanting to do is not do anything that would disturb anything lower. Basically, we want to load it dirt.
Sound like M10, probably that or sand one. Which one?
Well, sand, it's not going to pack. Sands is going to spray.
We're going to have to reseed it after it's put in.
They want grass on it, not M10.
Yeah, not unless y'all want to pack it and maybe help us put an asphalt strip in, which is, I know in Pensacola and McDonough and another place in Georgia, they've gone through the same things that we have. And they find, you know, they did that, and they put, when you do asphalt, you also invite the $30,000 jet guys to come in and fly.
The only problem is, is I, to me, that's just more to maintain. Grass strip is fine for what I want to do. Yeah. You said for people to think big. No, it's, and with it being on a landfill, it's constantly going to settle. So, I mean, this is something, it's been 18 years. We just need to do something because it's actually settling, and the rainwater is washing. There may be some leaks in the cap because there's holes developing where it looks like the soil is just completely washing through. We do maintain it, cutting the grass and that sort of thing. There's nothing, yeah, nothing we can do about what's happening.
Well, it might be that we can fix it because we've had to do the same maintenance throughout the whole landfill. So, let Tiffany look and see if there's some, we've done multiple places out there that we've had to already do this to.
We just, we just want to maintain, we want to go back to where we were if we can. We want to get it a lot more proper. We've had, I've had two or three mothers and I'll call about their sons and I'll want to do it. And I just love to know we're out there, but we're not out there as much because of the condition of the field. And the club itself has a lot already involved. I mean, that clubhouse and all that we built, everybody just pitched in money in the club. We built our clubhouse and everything. So, we've got money invested too. We want to maintain it as a nice place, and we want to keep it. We want to also be invite some of our good clubs to come down and have an outing. But a lot of them don't want to come because of the conditioning of what's happening. And I understand, I mean, you can't change nature. It just happens. But I want to thank every one of you in the county for allowing us to do this.
This is before, well, you were.
That's before him too, before any of us.
Am I that old?
Yeah.
Because I was 50, and I'm 67 now, so I know.
Oh, you even got on up there, actually.
Yeah.
I'm right behind you, so don't worry about it.
That's all, you know, that's just a number.
Yep. I tell you, I mean, you've almost got enough room. I mean, I've flown over there several times and looked at them going, you know, if I had to, I could land right there and come back out of it too.
We had a couple guys that own small aircraft that came in at some of our out. And we had some of the auto gyro guys from the, want to help draw more crowd to come in. But see, now you can't get them to come because of the condition of what we have. And like I said, it's no fault of the county or nothing like it, just nature, you know, it's just sunk. And we just like to get it back to where we could, you know.
We can get Tiffany to look at it. I'm pretty sure as long as we're putting on top of it, we're good on that, but we're not digging now. So, maybe something she can look at and we can.
And Ken, I'll get her, give her your number.
Okay, yeah, along with your friend.
She'll call you about 3:00 in the morning.
All right. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Y'all have a good evening.
All right, department heads.
I've got another special guest. Or do you want me to do him under department heads?
Wait, no, why don't you do him under citizen?
Okay.
Department heads. Are you doing the sheriff's report tonight? I just had to sleep. I generally let, I do that to Travis. I figured I'd catch you off guard, see if you're going to do the sheriff's report tonight. Mr. Isner, anything?
No, sir.
Assistant comments, Ms. Wendy.
I do. I have another special guest that's out there. I'd like to introduce y'all to Clint Burston, who is the interim superintendent for the Jones County School System. And he asked a lot of questions. And I said, well, I don't, since I've been elected, I haven't had a superintendent to come to a meeting. So, you can tell us what you want to tell us.
Okay, good evening. I am Clint Burston, the interim superintendent. And like Mrs., I think her name was Mrs. Waller, said her husband is from extra south. I'm originally from up north, Putten County.
County up north.
Yeah, that usually gives people a little chuckle. But we do have more snow than y'all have in Jones County, more ice over roads. But it is a pleasure tonight to be here and to lay my eyes on Ms. Gina King with the partnership, you know, that we have with the library and what's going on. But to here tonight, I just kind of want to give you a brief summation of what's been going on in the school system this year. Real quick, of course, you know that we did opt out of the floating homes at Zimchen with the county and the city. So, we're going to start with the completion of Dame's Ferry Elementary School. If you haven't had a chance to go by and see that school, a beautiful building, as always been beautiful, especially, you know, since I was a former principal of Dame's Ferry Elementary School back in the day. I've been here in Jones County since they opened up Wells. So, I think '01, '02 was when I first came under Ms. Blizzard as the assistant principal. And then I opened up the ninth grade academy at Maggie Kayla. And then I went back to Dame's Ferry as a principal. And now I'm in the board office, been in the board office for, you know, quite a while now and to the interim superintendent's chair. But currently, we completed Dame's Ferry. But right now, we are wrapping up the renovation of Jones County High School, the gym. The gym with the, we're adding AC to the area. Apparently, it's never had AC. I've never noticed that.
John Tremble said you do not play basketball in the summer.
I never noticed it getting hot in the gym, but.
That was John Tremble's theory when he designed that gym, that you don't need an air conditioner in a gym.
Really? Rest of, so, this is Georgia.
It is hot. So, we definitely are outfitting the gym. Of course, with any older building, we ran into some structural, having to put those large, heavy units on top of the roof, we had to shore up the roof and do some structure, structure work to it. But that's going well. We also renovating the finance auditorium at the Jones County High School. There are plans, actually, we're kind of moving into the abatement of the pre-K office, putting on a new floor. So, we have to make sure that the back office, if you, if, it's not the new pre-K office. If I can say that, it's back where Mr. Passon used to have his old office is, back through there. Kind of where the teacher's lounge is. They have a bathroom and some caucuses. So, back in that area. Something new that we're adding this year is sentegics. And that is an alarm system, alert system, in case we ever do unfortunately have a school intruder or a school shooting. The teachers will be able to alert the local law enforcement agencies. And of course, they are monitored by cameras. But we'll say a name tag and a push for a name tag. An alert will go out to every single school, every single computer, teacher's computer, and then to law enforcement. And plus, if you're on the outside of, I don't know if they want me telling all this, but if you're on the outside of the building, we have installed lights on the lamppost that will flash to let you know that something's going on in the building. As the building will lock down, you know. But in addition to that, Jones County, we added more security cameras and you're paying on keeping your students, the children safe. But we're also paying on building, I have approved a new agri mechanics building for the Jones County High School. So, we're definitely looking forward to growing that program. College and career ready. My daughter came out of school, says, Daddy, I can't take, you know, four more years of school, of college. I want to go to, you know, CGTC and do, you know, hair or makeup. But we have a lot of kids that we are starting to lose, well, the school system is starting to lose if we did not make a change. And in fact, Mama Candy comes to my house, he was a Jones County dropout. And he's like, Miss Burston, it just wasn't working for me. You know, I remember you, but you know, after that, you know, school wasn't working. So, now we're trying to evolve school into something more useful for students. You can, you know, through the Doodle enrollment program, mass you graduate, and some do with a two-year degree plus, you know, certification. We have awesome programs that most of you are familiar with. But lately, I've had the pleasure of working with a wonderful board. And they approve a five-year plan, which includes the renovation of Clinton Ridge Middle School, Gray Station Middle School, and hopefully, we'll have enough left over for mighty Wells. Any questions?
I'll just give you a heads up saying, know that we, you know, when Chuck, when Chuck was there, we, this board voted to make sure that if y'all ever need any help from the county, which we have been called on several times, that y'all can call. And if we, we've got the resources, we try to get in there. We've helped with the moving, moving the additional bleachers in for one of the state games. And I think we did several, we helped redo the parking lot in the high school. So, been called upon, and working together is what it's all about.
Yes, sir.
If you ever need that, you know, that assistance, and we've got the manpower to do it, just reach out to us and we'll see how we can help. Because like I said, we're all, we're all one big community. We need work together.
Yes, sir. I'd definitely take you up on that.
Yep.
Is the Georgia Safety Grant, I know they've upped it a little bit, and it's going to be an annual thing now. So, that should help out a good bit with the safety.
Yes, sir. That was quite an expensive program that we implemented. But when it comes to student safety, you really can't put a dollar on it, so.
That's one of the first things I've seen the state put in that is really helpful to school systems. That 61,000 miles a year per school. So, that's big. With no restrictions on it, just safety.
Absolutely.
And I see you're redoing the football field. Apparently, you've got a new press box going up there.
Yes, sir, we do. We do have a new press box going up. Yes, sir.
It was over two. It probably didn't take much to come down to.
You're right about that.
Commissioner Martin, you got a comment?
You know, I'm a track guy, so one of these days, y'all need to get an eight-lane track certified so our students can run. My kids have gone through the county and ran track and never had a home meet.
Right. We cannot compete here because of the track, the condition of the track and the actual size of the track.
So, you know, do that. And that will, it's kind of like AC in the gym 50 years later.
Commissioner Martin is on a thing big, track, right?
You've been on this track for, I know, nine years.
Golly.
They'll draw in more revenue.
And the terrible thing about track, it doesn't take much for our kids to go out in pure shoes. You know, you don't have to have a basketball. You just got to go out there and run it. And every kid has a skill out there that can be utilized. Not to mention, it's an easier sport to get scholarships and then many of the others. And we had Sherres Ham, right? We've seen him all over Facebook, qualified for the Olympics. He was a kid that ran with us at the Jones County Pups and then moved on to the high school level. We have a lot of kids that have that capacity. They just need a venue. And then, of course, if you do that, then track becomes a revenue-generating sport, which it's not right now. And they have to scrape by for an extra bus to transport kids and all that. Yeah, my daughter runs tracks this year. I'm just like sad.
She only had one coat for the license.
My God. Yeah, that was a lot. But anyways, yes, it'd be great.
No, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Well, nice to meet you. Looking forward to working with y'all. Any other citizens tonight that'd come forward? Mr. Kitchens, you want to, Commissioner, comment?
Like I have, Chairman, I hope everybody has a happy and safe fourth. Thankful for all the law enforcement, thankful for the fire department, rescue unit, everybody that puts their life on the line every day for us. Thankful for our community, thankful very much for our staff that makes us look good.
Mr. Wood?
I'll echo what Sam says, and I appreciate our departments working together with us, the fire department, sheriff's office, whether it's planning, zoning, and environmental. It all takes everybody working together to make this happen. And I appreciate the citizens' patience as various departments are working through different activities they go through. And hope everybody has a safe fourth.
Ms. Bone?
The fireworks, if y'all missed out on those last Thursday, it was phenomenal. It was large. It was loud. It was long. I mean, they went on forever.
It was lo- long. I mean, it, the, they went on for out forever, it felt like. But um, the other big thing about that is not only did we have the upper new part of the complex field, but the bottom, the old part of the field, there was kids playing pickleball while fireworks were going on. The courts were full. Um, I'd always park on the older side, it was easier to get out. So while I was walking up there, an older lady pulled up and she said, oh my God, what is going on? I'm here to pick up my grandkids and where are all these people here? And I said, oh, we had the fireworks tonight. She says, well, my grandkids come down here every Friday and Saturday night for pickleball.
Mm-hmm. Last Thursday, right?
I mean, y'all, we're doing something right. Yeah, pickleball, yeah.
Happy twenty-sixth.
Whatever.
Didn't you get, didn't you get, hit your last tournament with Commissioner Kishin's?
Yeah.
How'd that go?
You won.
No, how did it go?
What, how did what go?
I mean, how, how bad did you lose? I don't know. We won't go there.
It wasn't really a tournament. We hit the ball over the net.
Big of a tournament, wasn't it?
Okay, you had a ringer on your side too.
I thought you was out there by yourself.
No, we went out there by ourselves.
That's what Sam says, he is the ringer, whatever.
I have a ringer.
All right, the other thing, you've already had your time to talk big quiet. Um, the other thing is, if you're out there and you're thinking about getting a new addition to your family and a pet, an animal, a, a, a cat or a dog, right now, every day, our animal shelter is telling us that they are f- full. They can't have any more dogs coming in because they already have every cage filled. They have some beautiful little dogs up there too, and if I didn't have one already, I would have already went and picked up one of those. But I don't have room for him right now. So if you have the spot in your home and in your heart for a cat or a dog, please rescue and don't buy. Um, that's why we've got so many animals in the shelter. I mean, they had labradoodles up there the other day that were surrendered. And y- you know, it, pit bulls, if you want any kind of pit bull mix, you can go to any shelter in the United States and get any color you want. So just take the time, if you've never went and walked through the shelter, go walk through the shelter. Um, donate new dog food, cat food, any of that kind of stuff is helpful to them too. So just support local, all of our local stuff. Um, you know, being somewhere and have, I, I was at Middle Georgia Regional Commission the other day. And to have somebody in the class with me question, why would be, we be worried about water? She said, the county provides that. And I was like, no, the county does not provide water to everyone. And then somebody else raised their hand and said, I thought that too, cause I had lived in a big city all my life until I moved out to the country and found out that we had to dig a well. I didn't know what a well was. So, so many people in this world think that water is provided to them through their county or city. They don't know the difference.
Take it for granted.
We do, they do. Um, I, I, I talked about Bradley and the situation there. And they were just astonished that there was not water there. And I said, it's one of those things that we can't afford right now. Yes, it needs to have water there, but we can't get it there because of cost. So we know everything costs. And if we don't make changes now, ten years from now, we really won't be able to afford things. So when we buy local, so those taxes come back to us so that we can help and not take it off the rooftops because every penny counts. I'm done now. Good day, Lord.
All right, thank you. Um, just, you know, to piggyback off of what you said about the animal shelter. I have a friend in Marietta, um, actually, she's a mom of a student that I'm a case manager over. And they have to buy the animals from the shelter. So is there any way to have the shelters talk where if someone had a request for an animal, we could ship? Or they can make arrangements to come pick them up?
Yes, they have transport.
They do it now. They ship it out as, actually, out, they were doing it out of state too.
Right, I remember that. But if somebody had a request from a county that made them pay for it and they wanted a free pet, could they solicit Jones County, make a connection or ping Jones County for it?
So we have sp- sponsored animals here, so, so people make donations to sponsor pets that, you know, people come in and say, well, I, I'd like one, you know, but it does cost, because it cost us to, to manage it. So, yeah, we uh, we sponsor, I mean.
Have them spayed and neutered and all of that stuff before they leave?
And this might be a, a thing for ACCG or the state where Jennifer makes the connections where now statewide, they can look at pets, you know, from other centers. So it just came to mind because she wanted a dog and I say, come to Jones County, you know, we have a bunch. Oh, she wanted a cat, I'm sorry. I said, we have a bunch. All right, um, the other thing I, I, again, just sitting here thinking, library, you know, is doing great things, reaching a lot of people. The school system is doing expansion, um, some of which we don't know about and we probably should plan for. And I was thinking about, you know, I know we used to have the, the quarterly meetings, but just a vision and strategy meeting with the bodies, right, city, county, um, and school board. So that everybody kind of sees the big picture of what's going on and we know how to plan. Um, we haven't had one of those, um, and I think it would help, you know, not to mention just sharing services or what we can do. But let's look at what that looks like, right? Um, not only from a, a budgeting perspective, but like Matt's looks out forty years. I don't know any other entity that looks that far. How do, how far does Bibb County plan out?
For?
Schools?
Um, well, we, we have to do a five-year plan.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but, but we, we're looking out twenty years because that's when your life cycle of your school is up, so.
Right, and, and, you know, and he mentioned five year and I'm sure that they do the same. But as a county, I don't know that we know what that looks like. And I think it would help us, we're going into budget, millage rate, and we've set the millage rate. And, and I think the school board, just like every other body, tries to do everything in their budget that they can. To find out that the school gym does not have AC shocks me. It wasn't just somebody made a decision, it was, oh, it was probably money, right? It, it cost a whole bunch. But I think that's a reasonable thing to pay for, right, like AC in the gym. You can tell I've never been in the gym.
Do you have honors night with your kids?
They did honors virtually.
Uh, your twenty-twenty?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, that was nice. I was like, what, virtual? That's lame, but it's okay. Um, any event, uh, it would have been nice to, to have prepared for that. Cause you know, twenty-twenty-five, just getting AC in the gym just shocks me. But throwing that out there, if there's a plan or, you know, an invitation, Carl Vincent can do it. Um, you know, sort of strategically planning and then how we budget, because literally you need to be prepared for those things. So echo what Tim and, uh, not Tim, Sam and um, John and Cindy said about everything. It's, we're happy and um, you guys make us look good and, and more importantly.
Yeah.
Wendy, sorry, listen, I, listen.
Ralph, Louise.
I'm on antibiotics and I don't know what's really going on with my finger, but uh, it's medicine, so it's, it's okay. Have a great day, everybody.
So what are you taking on now?
I don't know. Um, I got bit by something and my finger was this big. Yeah. Yeah, it's crazy, so I don't know.
I got a hand wringing.
No, that's all right.
Commissioner Martin, one thing you brought up was the, the um, meeting with the city county and school board. And we talked, Jason and I talked about it a couple of months ago and I, we're trying to, we've talked with the city and uh, we're gonna get with the school board. And uh, we want to see if, Regional Commission was the one that was overseeing that for us. But uh, I think we need to get back to that on a regular basis. But it got to be where we would have an agenda and then the agenda just got smaller and smaller and less and less people showed up, like everything else. So, but I think we did need to put a focus on that, because I think uh, we did some good with that. When, when you have the buying power of three government entities, you get more bang for your buck. And I think that's what the taxpayers are expecting us to do, you know, if you, if you buying triple quantities, you're gonna get a better price.
Yeah, and, and that's a no-brainer. When we started looking at, you know, again, the efficiencies and economies of scale, it makes sense. Um, and then again, when planning, you know, if there is a school expansion, how do we prepare for that? We know that there's going to be a millage rate increase, or it should be. Well, we can offset some of that early on by putting some of that on a splotch or, you know, they can do a splotch and we can subsidize. So just thinking about how to do it smartly.
Is that having East Bloss, I think?
When's East Bloss in for us? Um, I know that we've, I can't remember, but yeah, we have an East Bloss.
Mm-hmm. Anything else?
No.
All right, if I could get a motion to, uh, go into executive session on, for personnel, real estate, and litigation, please.
I make a motion to uh, go into uh, executive session for personnel, real estate.
Second. Second, all in favor, I? Timmy, Wendy, if you'd like to see the crowd here, I hope y'all come back.
Cindy.
Cindy, I'm sorry.